Welcome to Ladies in Law where real world advice meets professional wisdom and empowerment in the realms of law and business. Your hosts, Lisa Goucher, Dawn Smith, and Kelly Raymond, bring you innovative strategies, practical guidance, and inspirational stories. Join us as we inspire and support women to thrive in traditionally male-dominated fields. We're here to promote inclusivity and provide practical advice for success.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to Ladies in Law. We are so grateful to have Paula Blackman here today. She is our council member, District Nine, and she is going to come out and talk about all of her great accomplishments today, some of the things that she has, you know, really believes in, why she got into politics, and we're just so grateful to have you. Welcome, Paula.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate being here.
Yeah. So first of all, let's, let's just talk about, I know you've got a Texas tech background, you know, tell us a little bit about how you decided to take this path that led you ultimately to where you are right now.
So yes, I am a Red Raider, grew up and raised in West Texas, and I think everybody goes on those little eighth grade trips to Washington DC. And I caught the bug walking through the Capitol. I mean, it was out, it was just amazing. And I've always interested, been interested in history and how we achieved democracy, if you will. And it was just fascinating. So what did I do? When I graduated, I got on the phone, found another fellow Red Raider, Dale Tillery, and he hired me. I had never stepped in the foot, in my foot into the Capitol, working much less lobbying, and he hired me spot on. And so I started my career, went and worked for Harriet Earhart, DART, the Real Estate Council, did some campaigning, and then followed municipal through to two mayors and a superintendent. And then that's when I realized I wanted my voice heard. I wanted my thoughts. I wanted my approach to solving problems. So I threw my name in the ring, and I won in 2019. And it was a pretty thrilling campaign when you are running one yourself, for yourself, and then becoming, you know, winning. It was, it was pretty exciting. And ever since then, I'm on my third term, and hopefully, fourth term will be victorious in May of 2025.
Good for you.
Wow, that's impressive. So when you first got into office, did you have an agenda? Or did you have to get, be brought up to speed?
I actually had some ideas. I mean, I knew where the bathroom was. That was, that was a thing in itself, because City Hall is pretty big. But I knew that we needed quality of life issues in East Dallas, White Rock Lake, the park, preserving it as a park, maintaining that open space. I knew that housing was going to be an issue. It's a hot place in Dallas. And then the pandemic hit, and it kind of changed everything, and it was survival mode. It was getting testing kits. It was getting vaccines. It was making sure people knew that we were going to get through this, because there was a lot of unknowns. So we're now back onto the agenda of dredging White Rock Lake, looking at how we can create more connectivity between our neighborhoods, and our commercial centers, and our open space, and then just looking at how we stabilize our housing, because it has gotten very expensive in East Dallas.
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of one of the things that I think you have to be passionate about doing what we do, right? You're in politics and you're passionate about it. I'm a lawyer. I'm passionate about it. Lisa is certainly passionate about business. I'm super interested about this eighth grade trip that you took, because the same thing happened to me. I went on an eighth grade trip to Washington DC and went to the Supreme Court, and that was really it for me.
The Supreme Court is a fabulous building.
It's amazing.
And it is, I mean, the, what people don't realize is democracy is a precious thing. And, and you should, you should hold it every day in your hands and in your heart and in your mind, because not everybody has this ability to speak freely, and to cast a vote with somebody to represent you, and to then approach that person and say, why did you vote this way? Why didn't you do this way? Or why don't you think about it this way? That is precious. And we all take advantage of that some days. And so I fell in love with it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so is this kind of a stepping stone for you? Are you thinking about kind of bigger, bolder things maybe at some point, or?
Right now, I love the job I do have. I'm the councilwoman for District Nine and plan to run in 2025 for reelection. But if something does pop open, of course, I think, I think we as women, and we as elected officials should never say no, because the minute you say no, they'll catch it on camera, and it'll be back out there. And so I do believe that I have learned a lot by sitting in the seat. You know, you are in a fishbowl. And so I see people at the grocery store. I see people at my kid's school. I see people walking down the street, and believe me, they all have an opinion. And so my job has been to take all these different opinions and formulate an approach, a solution, a strategy to really better communities. And I think this is the best training ground and the best development league that someone could have is at City Hall. And so I do believe that I am ready for a something else. And I'm, I'm curious as what the universe has in mind for that something else.
That's it. You got to open up to the universe.
Yeah, most definitely.
I do believe that. You have to put it out there.
Right. Right. You have to own it. You just put it out there. You believe in it. And you know, your mind doesn't know the difference between fantasy and reality.
Correct.
That is very true. So every day, you've just got to be open to saying, this is what I'm doing. I am this. I am that. I will do this. So it's going to be exciting to see what you do next. But I'm super curious, because I haven't been politically involved. So for the others who watch, the other women, the men who watch our podcasts, how do you, like, you gained so much success with White Rock Lake and what you did there to dredge it and get it back to revitalization? Where do you get your support? I mean, that may be a super basic question, but when you get onto the council, is everybody on the same team?
No. And it's, you really have to build your team. And, and you have to prove that this is a lot of money, and we need to do this, and why we need to do this. And so it was finding your, your likely partners, a park board member who understood that we needed to do this and what we needed to accomplish, whether it be fixing the stone tables, whether it bringing more park rangers, trails, partnering with our county. And so you find people that have those similar things.
Interests, yes.
Interests, and you run with it. And then you got to go find seven other votes at council, because you can't get anything done unless you have eight.
Yeah. Talk to us about that. How do you, how do you build those? I mean, I was looking, I was really impressed. I mean, our city council is pretty diverse. We have six women on and eight men. So I felt, you know, that's pretty good. I was a little bit surprised when I saw that. So how do you build that, those alliances when you're trying to accomplish something?
You listen. I think a lot of people don't listen. They talk way too much, because they will tell you what they believe in when they are talking, because we get about eight minutes or nine minutes to speak. And so they will tell you, this is what I think needs to happen. And so what you can do is you can shape your policy based on that conversation or just listening. And so I can say, oh, you, do you have a similar park? We have the same interests. You know, Keese Park is in your district, or Stevens Park is in your district. Let's figure out how we can create a better park system and get what we all need in that park system. And it may be that, you know, the field house or the golf course at Stevens Park needs to get rebuilt, or at Keese Park, there needs to be more programming, or at White Rock Lake, we need more, we need it dredged. So then you start finding likely partners in crime, so to speak.
Sure, commonalities.
Commonalities, and now I've got four votes. You know, I mean, it's, and so that's, and then I've got to go find four more. And it's like, all I say is, you know what? Let's go out and look at the lake, and let's go to the arboretum. And people are like, this is great.
Just getting outside and actually seeing it.
And understanding that that park serves not just the East Dallas community, but it serves the region, and letting people understand that. And it kind of sells itself to some degree.
Well, in that whole process, okay, I see total strategy when you're trying to figure out, connect the dots and everything. What part is most fun for you? Where, where do you reap the most pleasure? Is it in the strategy component, or is it in the end result?
So I was the kid that anytime somebody got their knot in their shoe, they would give me the shoe to go and untangle the knot.
Okay.
So I love the strategy. I love understanding, you know, and getting into the details and understanding how this, this little thing is wrapped around, and it's causing this, you know, mound of stuff, and, and then undoing it, and then seeing, okay, now it's all done.
I love that. I love knowing how you tick, because it's such a.
It's very simple, actually.
Very challenging role, be doing what you're doing.
And it's, you know, we, we tend to complicate things as human, and sometimes it's just simply a knot that you need to undo, one thing at a time. And, and I, I actually enjoy hearing what people have to say, whether it's my view or not. Right? I love understanding why somebody feels the way they do, and, and validate those feelings. Now, I doesn't mean I have to agree with them, right? But it's like, I truly understand why you feel that way. And a lot of times, it has changed the way I've positioned. You know what I mean? Like, it's like, oh, wow, yeah, I get it. I get it. And I don't think I've, you know, sacrificed myself or my belief, but what I think I've done is I've added a layer to this problem and this solution that people can, that, that can, people can revolve around and become part of it versus feeling that they're not involved. And I think we need to stop and listen to each other a little bit more and have a little empathy and understand. Doesn't mean you have to agree with them. Doesn't mean you have to change your point of view, but just connect with them.
How do we do that? How do we build on that momentum, right? Like, just listening, having empathy? I'll just tell you, so my neighbors across the street have different political views than we do on our side of the street. We both have signs out front. And when we put our sign up, this neighbor of mine that I think is amazing, he's very kind and friendly, and we've always said hi to each other, he has completely stopped saying hi. I mean, just completely stopped saying hi.
See, that breaks my heart.
I know.
That doesn't need to happen. And that's what democracy is, right?
Right.
You have a freedom of speech. You have this great opportunity to express who you support.
Exactly.
And maybe take some cookies?
That's what I was thinking. I've been trying to get kind of in front of his car a little bit, you know, just to kind of stop him.
A bottle of wine and just say, hey, yeah, that was some alcohol.
That could be good or bad.
I know. But I think people need to, you know, take a deep breath. It's, you know, it's part of our US, it's part of the, of America. You, we have every two years an election. And so it doesn't mean that you can't keep being neighbors, and you can't be, keep being family members. I mean, my family is completely, we're on, and we just, she, like, I actually kind of make it a joke in some, like, you know, like, oh, my gosh, did you see this? Or did you see that? And it's like, people just don't need to take it so serious and personally, like, but it has become that, and I get it. But we just need to realize that at the end of the day, we're all Americans, and we all want the best for our country. And if we start from that, then hopefully, everything else just kind of evolves.
Right. Or just see the other person as, you know, it's this person that you know, that you love, that you care about, that you respect, that you've always gotten along. That person is still that person.
Exactly.
That person has not changed. They just maybe believe in different things and how to lead. And I think that that, like you said, that's what our country is all about, is having different perspectives. That's how we grow. That's how we learn by opening up to new perspectives. So.
I mean, could you imagine having an election, but it's really not an election, like Russia?
Oh, right.
I mean, could you imagine that? That is not, that's not democracy. It's, you know, it's a foe, like, we have this opportunity to have this dialogue. And again, we should treasure it every day.
Yeah, yeah. One thing that you mentioned that is compelling to me, I mean, Lisa and I both have kids, and they're adult children, and I know they keep us grounded. Would you say that your family keeps you grounded?
Three boys, 28, 23, and 21. So we're empty nesting too, yeah. But they, they, they keep me grounded. I've said they're my biggest champion and cheerleader, but my harshest critic. And so I'm blessed. They're, they're all, they're good kids, great husband, great family. So I'm blessed.
Yeah. So how, how have you really been able to make progress on things that you care about, and still balance everything, you know?
You know, when you serve on council, and, you know, our job is to better the city, right? So I look at what kind of city do I want my kids to live in? Because that's the same city that I want everybody's kids in, regardless of where they live. Safe, quality of life, good schools, quali, you know, roads, places to go and shop, you know, for your groceries, healthy food. I want that for every family. So not just my kids. But they are the ones who send me, you know, texts in the morning that either, you know, make me laugh or make me think. And, you know, he, my oldest son had a friend, a good friend, and our neighbor, and he died of a fentanyl overdose. And I remember it was a Wednesday morning, we get alerts about deaths in our district, and I opened up my laptop. I knew the address. I texted the mom. And about that time, my son texted me and told me that this is what he had heard. And I didn't want to confirm anything until after the mom. And for a year, almost a year, he kept saying, what are you going to do, Mom? This, this is a, this is an epidemic. This is hurting kids, and they don't know what is happening. And he was just out, I mean, he was two to three years out of college, and it was, it was happening, you know, when he was in college. And I was like, you know what? He's right. I am in a position to do something. Because all he kept saying is, you are in a position to do something, do it. And so I teamed up with my colleague, Adam Basildua, and we created a strike force. We, we had some policies and some laws that needed to be changed to help us get more information out. We teamed up with Judge Cruzo, the DA, and we went to Austin and got some legislation changed. We are working on fentanyl testing strips that is a harm reduction, and we are looking to mental health. We're looking at MAT, Medical Assisted Treatment, which is a, it is a proven way to keep people off this drug that once they've become addicted. It is deadly. It is harmful. It scrambles your mind. And, and so what we are looking to do is really keep people safe. In the meantime, of trying to figure out, how do we stop it coming into our country and creating, you know, these, these horrible opportunities for people to become addicted to it. And so I can say that he is the one, the reason why that I've been very involved with the fentanyl situation.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess when you're, when you're trying to shape your priorities, right? There's so many things that can be done. You've talked about what you've done for the environment, which is amazing. Talked about fentanyl and what you're trying to do to prevent that from hurting our kids. How do you choose, make these hard choices about kind of what to focus on?
So I kind of go through in my mind, and it's just because I think I've been in the, the business so long, is what is going to move the needle that makes our community or society or city better? And, and if you, if that is your North Star, is I want to make it better, then you look at, okay, is it, is it open space? Is it a harm reduction for, you know, folks that are recovering from addiction? Is it mental health? And I think what you do, and what I do, is what are the ones that are kind of a district priority? You know, we've talked about White Rock Lake, we've talked about, but then you also look like, what is the overall city objectives? And what, how do we make that better? And you basically pick five, and you do them really well. And then if you can't, and if those five, then if there's 10, then you find people to team up with. So then it's, the load's not as heavy. So then I got, I have 10 now, but five are mine, and five, I'm partly, jointly working with somebody else. And so I think that is the key, is you, you do what you can control very well, and then you work with others on the things that you have, you need partners in. And so that way, it's, the lift is not as heavy.
Well, and how have you been able to reduce taxes? It seems like that is something that is rarely done. It's not very sexy. Nobody really wants to talk about taxes, but nobody wants to pay them. And you've made huge strides, and you continue to make strides in that arena. So talk about that.
Yes, we have, we gave the biggest tax rate reduction, which is a tax.
That just gives me chills. I would love a reduction.
And, I mean, and it was looking under every cushion, every rock, and making sure that what we are providing is the services that our residents and constituents want, and then streamlining a lot of city business. The city manager heard that that's what we want, and they went to work with their pencils. And, and, I mean, and so it's, it's not been an easy task, but we feel that we can still deliver the services with this budget that we've presented and passed. And so it's not easy, and, but it's needed, because people are being pushed out of their home. Taxes are just going, they're, and it's the appraisals. And that's something that we need to work on with our state legislature, is putting the appraisals back in line, because they're getting a little off kilter.
Yeah, most definitely. And so as far as, I feel like you're right in the middle, and you'll be running again. Do you feel a sense of urgency right now when the turn, when you have to run again in May?
Oh, yeah.
Which is right around the corner. So are you like, running around and trying to check boxes?
That's why she's here to talk to us, get the word out.
So you're here. This is wonderful. So what?
I've kicked off my camp, my reelection campaign in June.
Nice.
And that is, you're, you're correct. We are, it's, it's two, it's a double whammy, right? I'm about to be on the ballot again in May. And then, that's where my last two years, I term out. So I've got to not only, I've, I've got to wrap up some things that I've tried or put it in a place where it can move forward when the next person takes over. We have tons of state highways. We have three, actually, not tons. But we have three state highways in D9, and there are, there are fast tracks to A to B, points A to point B. And what we're trying to do is work with Tech Stock to create a livable community. And that's my focus for my next term, is, okay, let's set that up. What does the land use look like on these highways? What does, can Tech Stock work with us and maybe give us a lane? And we could create some bike lanes, multimodal. And so that's the one thing that I'm really working on for the next term, besides, of course, dredging White Rock Lake.
The most important thing.
The most important thing. But, but you're right. Yeah, we are about to be in election season again for the city council. And it comes very, it comes, it's like a snowball. Yeah. And it, you think, oh, it's this little thing. And the next thing you know, it's here, and it's coming at you. And, but you know what? Serving the residents of the city has been the best job. And, and I've actually served them in many capacities, right, in my, but I will say, being directly elected by a, by a group of, you know, by your, by your, by your neighbors, essentially, is the best thing, is the best feeling ever.
Oh, that is, like, that is amazing. And I can't wait to see what the next chapter brings. I mean, because I could just feel it. I can, you know, feel the energy that you have, and you're just incredibly vibrant.
Oh, thank you. I mean, it is actually, I mean, I do have coffee, but I haven't had a lot today. But.
Coffee is our friend.
Yeah. I love, I love the job. I really, truly love the job.
It totally shows.
And it's like the knot, right?
Yeah.
It's, and everybody has a knot somewhere, right, in their shoe?
Yes.
And they need, they need a friend to say, can you get this knot out? And it will spend the time to actually look at it, like, why is this piece going this way? And understanding it and going, ah, I just need to pull this.
So see, Paula, I want to delegate that knot. That's what I, I, you know, I don't.
I give my knots away. I do. I give my knots away too.
Get.
Oh, the necklaces? I love getting knots out of necklaces.
I give them all to my husband. When that happens, here, he's just like, really?
So Kelly, Kelly Raymond, she loves to get knots, knots out too. She got a knot out of my necklace one day, and she, she's like, give that to me. That's my favorite thing to do.
I do. I put my little, my Magna Fine Readers on, right? Because the big ones. And I literally will sit there with, and I will like, sometimes tweezers in a safety pin, the point of it, and all, you know, I, I find, I, I find actually peace in looking at a complex problem, and then developing a solution. And then the best part of it, too, is bringing people with you to get that solution actually implemented.
And we talk a lot about that here, because that's a line, camaraderie that we all have, no matter what we're doing, as women, as men, in business, in law, in politics, right? How do you get people to come with you? You know, building those alliances. So you already talked about really being a good listener. That's a, that's a tool, a must, having empathy. What other, you know, what other skills do you think that you employ, working with the other council members? Because I'm sure that there's a lot of folks there that you're trying to work with. Sometimes you get along, sometimes you don't. You know, how, how do you deal with those strong personalities?
So find the good in everybody. Find the one piece of goodness in everybody. And yes, it can be very hard some days, but you've got to just find it. And then I believe, do what you say you're going to do. So if you say you're going to do something, then you do it. And if you can't do it, then you go and you tell them, I can't do it.
Yeah, you own up to it, right?
Own up to it. Credibility, and you know this in law, and in business, and in politics, credibility sometimes is the only thing you have at the end of the day. And if you waste that away, then it takes lifetime to bring it back. You really can't. And so that's the piece of my, my dad used to always, you know, if you can't do it, then don't say you're going to do it.
Yeah. And if you mess it up, own it, and then say it, you know?
And apologize.
Yes, exactly. I have had some of the most loyal clients because of what started out as a mess up. But just calling and owning it, and that's not how we typically do things.
And I'm here to make it right.
I've got to fix it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we got to have a plan.
Yeah.
Somehow come up with a plan to fix it.
Yeah. And it, it's, it sounds really easy, but it's, it's hard to some degree, to its fault. But I will tell you, in you having kids, having kids makes you humble.
Yes.
And I've had to admit fault, you know, I've had to apologize to my kids sometimes for, that wasn't my best hour, you know, and I should have handled it this way versus that way. I've grown from that. And I think that you do that, you should do that in your everyday life, too. It's okay.
It's okay to make mistakes.
That I want to ask you about your husband. So, you know, I kind of get the impression that you're going 24/7 at times, like, you get on a mission, your strategy, you're untying the knot. So where does he fall on that picture? Like, is he calming you? Is he saying, all right, Paula?
Yeah. Yes. He is my beacon. He is the, I'm, I say he's my, I'm the kite, and he's holding the kite.
Oh, nice.
But he is very level-headed. He is, he's an architect by training, so everything is a process. And he's okay with me going and being, I mean, he is a very strong man in himself. And, but he's okay with having a strong, opinionated woman with, by his side, too. And, and so he is a, he's a good guy. He is, I've known him since I was 10. We went, we grew up in Snyder, Texas, together. He was my brother's roommate at Tech. I, I did have a crush on him, I'll admit it. But we didn't start dating until after we were all out of college. And he, he was, he's, he's a great guy. And I, I'm honored that he has picked me. And so, and like I said, we have three great boys, two little dogs, and we just, we, we spend time together. That's the thing, is we find what we want to do, and we go do it. And it may be hiking, it may be just having a cocktail out on the porch, just hanging out. And that's, I think that's nice, too. You've got, everybody has to have that one person that hanging out is okay.
Well, and especially being an empty nester, because we are as well. So you have to like your partner.
You have to.
You know, not just love them, you have to like them. And so you have to find that time together, because that's all you got. The kids are gone.
Yeah, there's no excuse now.
That's right, no excuse.
Yeah.
There's no hiding behind sports or anything like that.
Extracurricular activities, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been, it's, it's been a great 30 years. We've been married 30 years.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah. It, it's, it's not been easy. I mean, I'm not going to sugarcoat it, but you've got to be committed. And I mean, and so I have that commitment. And it's like, okay, we're, we're going.
We're going to figure it out, right?
Figure it out. And, and if you, and it's kind of, I guess, I bring that approach to everything, right? Including finding your commitment, you, you know, finding what, what can we collaborate on? What can we talk about together? And then going with it. And so I take that to City Hall, too.
I love that. So just kind of getting ready for this election now, right? May of 2025. I just, I can't even believe this year is almost over.
Sci-fi to say 2025.
It's crazy. It's crazy. I mean, what are, what are you running on? What are your key points that you want people to know going into this election season?
So we, in D9 in East Dallas, our crime has come down, our violent crime comes down. The one element that is giving me pause is domestic violence. That is where we've had a, an. That is where we've had a, an uptick in the line item. And those are hard to, to prevent. I mean, because it's a person that knows another person. And so I want to still focus on driving our crime down, looking at property crime, looking at our speeding along our highways or state highways along our roads, making sure that people know that they need to drive the speed limit and we're going to enforce that. And then again, White Rock Lake, making sure that it is in a place with the master plan completed, the dredging project underway or moving forward. And then we have some roadways, Ferguson Road and Garland Road, where we are looking at how the land use is going to interfere, not interfere, but interact and coincide or be a part of the transportation. And we feel, or I feel, that that is a big issue in East Dallas because we need to grow those corridors and make them very vibrant and connected with each other. And so make it the next hotspot in East Dallas to live. And so I'm going to be running on, we've started these, these things. It's my final term. We're bringing down taxes. We are working to make your quality of life the best it can be. So I would like two more years to finish them out and I would appreciate their vote in that, in that, that approach.
Well, we support you 100%.
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for being on. We've just really enjoyed it and we'll have you on again.
After the election or before the election or during the election.
Yes, sounds good. Thank you so much, Paula.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Learned a lot.
Thanks, everybody, for tuning in with us today. If you have any questions or comments, make sure you email us at hello@ladiesinlaw.com. Thanks again.
Thanks for listening to today's episode of Ladies in Law. We hope you're walking away inspired and ready to shake things up in lawn business. Don't forget to hit subscribe and let us know what you think. Spread the word and share this podcast with your network. Follow us on socials for all the behind the scenes fun and sneak peeks of upcoming episodes. Until next time, keep rocking it, keep breaking the mold, and as always, keep aspiring to inspire.